Welcome everyone, it's five o'clock, so we will start. Let's start with roll call.
On, Councilmember Sinks, Vice Mayor Chow and Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Here.
Okay, so we will start right on time with our study session. So, staff ready?
Yes.
Great.
Well, Mayor Sinks, good evening, my name is Angela Slay. I apologize. I'm the Economic Development Manager. To my right is Tom Ford, Director of Urban Design at the M Group. They are the consultants who have been working with us on the three initiatives that you're going to hear about this evening. I will begin with giving a background on the EDSP itself, leading up to this point. So, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, it's a blueprint for the city's future economic development activities. An EDSP is a multi-year plan to strategically position the city and its business environment. Things that are taken into account when developing a plan are what you see here, regional and local economic trends, retail trends and implications for Cupertino businesses, the impact of the business community and how well it's doing on the city's fiscal health, opportunities for maximizing the value of what is already here, and the implementation of strategies for the city and its partners, which can include other organizations locally and regionally. So this is just a quick description of the process and timeline getting us to the EDSP. Prior to 2014, we had not, the city had not had an EDSP. So, we went out with an RFP for consultants in August of 2014. By November, we had conducted interviews, and we had selected Strategic Economics Consulting Firm out of Berkeley for their past experience having developed EDSPs and economic development work for other cities. In February of 2015, we had executed the contract, and then they began the work, which included research, analyses, stakeholder interviews throughout the calendar year of 2015. August, we had a community workshop, at which I will, the comments of which I will present in a little bit. And then by the end of the year, in October, we had a draft economic background report. Now, the first deliverable work product was this background report using economic data and analyses and stakeholder feedback upon which you typically build your EDSP. And then throughout the year, you'll, you'll see that we had gone to council. We had two study sessions in 2016, of which we presented the background report, and then there was a draft EDSP. And then by October of 2016, council adopted the EDSP. In 2017, the council adopted the Fiscal Year 2017-2018 Work Program, which identified the three initiatives that we have been working on. And then, for further assistance, we had contracted with the M Group for work on the three initiatives in October. And then throughout the calendar year of 2018, we've been conducting research, analyses, stakeholder interviews. In May, we had held an EDSP open house for the community. And then we are now, at this point, where we have some updates to present to you. So I had mentioned, we had a community workshop in August of 2015. And some of the community comments and feedback that we had heard were location, our prime location, the heart of Silicon Valley, our excellent freeway access, being highly competitive tech sector, highly educated and politically active residents, and an excellent school district and quality of life. And then issues for economic development. We had heard there's limited opportunities for clothing and other specialty goods, shopping and entertainment, that independent retailers and other small businesses struggle with high costs. And that includes lease rates as well as minimum wage in this area, predominance of a single employer, and again, the interest to protect the quality of life was very critical. So not only did we gather information from these events, but at the same time, the city typically has its Godby Community Survey. And so, we had taken feedback from the Godby Survey, and we heard the most important issues facing Cupertino at that time were affordable housing at 33%, traffic 21%, and controlling growth 17%. And again, many residents were concerned about preserving the quality of the public school system as the community continued to grow. So the background report, which I've included as a desk item, again, it gives a lot of employment and marketing trends, data identifies local assets, presents the opportunities and challenges for attracting and retaining businesses in Cupertino. And here you can see the list of opportunities and challenges we face in terms of employment and industry trends. So, things that you've heard already, growing job base, major technology employers, as are opportunities, attractive business climate for small entrepreneurs and startups, and a concentration of small and mid-sized professional and technology firms. And our challenges are few, small and mid-sized manufacturing businesses, and challenging environment for mid-sized firms as they grow. And here is just a chart, just to show, at this time, this, these were numbers from 2012. You can see that we outpace the other cities in the South Bay in terms of the number of companies with employees from one to four. So majority of our companies are very small. The next, we delved into the office sector. So again, opportunities and challenges, premier office location, people want to be here in Cupertino, are centrally located, access to venture capital. And then our challenges, the predominance of a single tenant, limited availability of office space, and lack of turnover of mid-sized spaces. So Cupertino traditionally has very low office vacancy rates. We typically hover at about the 2% rate, which means when office space becomes available, it's quickly leased or subleased, however, at a premium. And then this chart just shows you, again, it's a snapshot of the data that we had at the time, number of deals by building size in 2014. Clearly, the majority of deals were for office spaces at less than 3,000 square feet. And then you can see as it becomes less and less at the larger sizes. So brokers indicated that the large spaces, particularly in the range of 20,000 square feet to 100,000 square feet, are in high demand for expanding companies seeking locations here in Silicon Valley. However, the space sizes is extremely limited in Cupertino. And companies often were competing with Apple, which typically, typically offers to pay for significant tenor improvements for those availabilities.
Can I ask a question about office size? So, this is chart is only for turnover rate, right? So what are the typical size of leases that existing companies in Cupertino?
That I would have to pull, but the, yes, so this was a snapshot of the deals that were made at that time. We do have office sizes that range, but I would have to...
So, this is only for Q1 2015, that one quarter?
I think it was number of deals by building throughout 2014.
Throughout 2014, number of deals. So we don't know how, what, what are the existing spaces, their sizes that in Cupertino?
I do not have an inventory, but I can...
That would be good to know.
Like more current.
Yeah.
Okay. And this map here just shows major employment locations. So you can see where the denser employment locations are. And then we move on to our retail sector. Because retail was a topic of interest, we went into great detail, excuse me, detail researching and sharing the information with the community. At the workshop that I had mentioned earlier, Christine Firstenberg of Metravations spoke on factors regarding site selection for retailers, as well as she shared her experience being the broker to bring Stein Mart here to Cupertino. And so in the background report, it discusses our opportunities, that we have strong local buying power, very high household incomes here in Cupertino, many neighborhood and business-serving retailers. And at the time, there was new construction for the mixed-use developments underway. And at that point, I believe it was Main Street, 19800, and the Biltmore adjacent project. Challenges, declining sales and stagnating sales tax revenues, highly competitive retail trade area, and then an inventory of older strip retail centers. So at that point, when we took an inventory of the strip centers and the neighborhood malls, those were, the majority were built in the 1970s. So this next slide just shows you some of the things that retailers look for. So trade area demographics, they don't necessarily look at city boundaries. They will take a look at trade areas, which many times, you know, consists of multiple cities, smaller cities. But then it's more of the drive time, what they consider. They also take into account competitors in the trade area, location with storefronts, width and depth, and the other items here. So traditionally, probably 30 years ago, the concept for retail was to have a large sea of parking before you actually got to the store. Now, in the past probably 10 years, that has changed, where retailers want to be at the street front, so it's more pedestrian-friendly. So there are shifts, and our older stock of shopping centers are still in the older settings and types. This next map shows our trade area and what is typically considered by retailers. Red is the highest concentration of sales. So you can see Cupertino has been kind of lumped together with Sunnyvale. We are outlined in green with the green star. And so for many retailers, they see us as an easy drive over, you know, to the east, to Valley Fair, Santana Row, and then an easy drive north to the other shopping centers. Next, the retail sector. This again was a snapshot at that time, just showing the decline in sales from 2004, 2005, excuse me, to 2014. And so ultimately, the background report fed into the EDSP, and the EDSP found these key issues to address. The first is connectivity and place-making, having a there-there. Many times retailers and businesses want to have a defined and a new kind of place to locate. The next was retail support and development. Again, supporting, attracting retail and supporting the businesses that we have. Issue C, support growth of small and mid-sized businesses. Issue D, hospitality, and issue E is marketing. And just a quick overview of going into each of those five key issues, suggestions were provided in terms of what could be done. So for example, connectivity and place-making, investing in the public realm improvements, and essentially creating a new there and community, and supporting local and regional transportation improvements. Again, making it easier for folks to get around. Supporting growth of small and mid-sized businesses to facilitate the development of new office and industrial flex space for small and mid-sized companies. Again, what we had heard during our conversations was the need for being able to diversify the types of businesses that we have. And again, supporting the growth of these entrepreneur and, and small startups, and being able to have space that could accommodate them and be somewhat just geared towards these smaller types of office or businesses. So supporting development of business incubator, accelerator coworking, shared and on-demand workspaces. Again, at the time, that was a growing trend with workplaces and other types of those coworking businesses coming up at that time. Also continue to strengthen visiting and outreach programs for small to mid-sized businesses, and develop a cohesive business support network, offering technical assistance to these businesses and support. The next is retail support and development. So some of the strategies that they offered were working with retail property owners and tenants to revitalize and upgrade aging shopping centers on Stevens Creek Boulevard. Support emerging restaurant and entertainment and shopping clusters that serve as destinations for workers, residents, and visitors. Again, wanting to be able to capture the evening crowd to maintain and sustain our businesses. And then develop policies for regulating food trucks and other mobile services, including the types of mobile services that are permitted, and being able to manage the times and locations, and how to process that. Hospitality, provide adequate hotel rooms and event venues to support the city's general fund, and to meet the, the needs of the community. And marketing, develop an integrated approach to marketing Cupertino to brokers, business owners, and others as a center for innovation and the heart of Silicon Valley. So again, this spoke to business attraction and just growing our business community. So from that, from all of those key issues, we decided on the three initiatives. And again, as mentioned, these were included in the Fiscal Year 2017-2018 Work Program. And so since then, staff has been working with M Group to, for work on the mobile vendors regulation, incubator and coworking space use, and the innovation, a possible innovation district vision plan. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tom to go ahead and discuss the updates on each of those initiatives.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you for letting me come and speak with you folks today. So the first project that we're working on responds to Strategy Nine and the EDSP, and is to develop regulations, not just for food trucks, but all kinds of mobile services. So in moving forward, we, we, the goals for this specific task or project were to respond to the evolving nature of what's going on in the retail sector. There's been a lot, an emergence of not just food trucks, but other kinds of mobile vending. And we looked at the city's existing code 5.48, I believe it is, that regulates mobile sales, and started to look at how we might facilitate better use of that code. Right now, 5.48 does not allow mobile vending from anything with a, with a motor. No, motorized vehicles are not allowed in that ordinance. And then, since we're doing that, we wanted to ensure that the, that there was public safety as, as those services were offered, not only in the services themselves, but also at the sites where they would be located. So the issues, well, let me first say, so we looked at type of services, locations, hours of operation, and impacts and mitigation. We had formulated a draft ordinance update. And then late last year, the state passed SB 946, which regulated how local communities are able to enforce their own regulations regarding sidewalk vendors. Primarily, it deals with non-motorized sidewalk vendors, and they specify two types of vendors, sidewalk vendors and roaming sidewalk vendors. And right now, it's my, I believe the way the law is written, that since the city doesn't have any regulations for mobile sidewalk, or roaming sidewalk vending, it has no capacity to actually cite someone or go in and actually say, "You can't do that", because they don't have a standing ordinance. So, late last year, we took a little bit different turn and started writing the ordinance to be, so that Cupertino's ordinance was in compliance with the state regulations. So it's mostly about the roaming, where it's allowed, hours of operations, and the manner in which you can assign fines, and especially for repeat violations. The state law requires very specific dollar amounts for repeat offenses. So where we are with that right now, then, is we're working with staff. We've, we've updated the ordinance, we believe, to respond to the new concerns that SB 946 presented. And I'm ready to do another meeting with the staff that would be, you know, implementing the permitting. And we could have that back to you, an ordinance for you to review fairly soon. So the second project we're working on responds to the Strategy Three in the EDSP. It's to enable incubator and coworking space in, in a CG district. And it's also responding to the office cap. So what we were looking at was the smaller types of uses that are more for incubator spaces, trying to facilitate a way in which they could use space in a CG zoning district. So the goals were to facilitate that use and to enable those companies to have a place to exist. And as part of that, looking at some of the underutilized, potentially underutilized retail space in the city. So, for us, this was largely trying to really understand what that use is. What that, for lack of a better term, I'll call it land use typology, how it might be differentiated from a typical office use, and how it might be similar to the kinds of retail uses that activate the frontages along the streets on which those retail uses exist. So a lot of these types of businesses face rent pressure. The leasing rates that they can afford are generally a lot lower than typical office users. And it's a type of office use that's not, it's, it's very collaborative if you walk into some of these environments. And there's many of them around, both, you know, one-offs and chains, if you will, where businesses come in, you've heard probably of WeWork and places like that. And how those organizations have their business model set up generally says a lot about how much square footage they would want. And we were trying to target smaller square footage opportunities, the more entrepreneurial types of things. So, the status of that particular project, it's also, we've gone back and forth with the, with the staff and shown them some things. And what we're really focusing on now is developing standards for a maximum floor area in which that these, these types of businesses would be allowed, that the building frontage would have to remain in active use, similar to a retail situation. And so, we're doing a lot of work with how active use might be defined in a code. And then the last thing is a mechanism to cap the number of employees, so that these spaces don't become available. And then suddenly, a company with 5,000 employees takes over that space, and it's off the market, and that company that really needed the lower rent space doesn't have an opportunity. The third project we're working on responds to a couple of the key issues that Angela mentioned are in the EDSP. The connectivity and place-making, and support growth of small and mid-sized businesses. And this is, we are looking at an innovation district. And there's a lot of these springing up in different cities. Generally, we're looking at the Bub Road special area. And generally, many of these might be a much larger geographic area. And I included this little diagram from the Brookings Institute because for me, when we were doing our research about what these places need to be and how we might develop a zoning ordinance that facilitates that, this diagram captured what's really needs to happen at these places. There's a lot of synergy. So there's the physical assets, the buildings, if you will. Quite often, they're in rehabilitated warehouse and industrial-type buildings, which goes into how much they can afford for rent. And that's why they generally spring out of areas like that. But then they also have brainpower assets and the networking, the synergy between that these businesses that tend to be in these areas. And then the areas generally develop as a place with a very vibrant public realm. So that the space between the buildings might be two totally different companies, but there's enough synergy in those two companies that there's a lot of back and forth. So the public realm in these areas can be a thing that can be improved. So again, this is where we're looking. We're looking at the, it's currently zoned light industrial, these properties up on the Bub Road area. The goals were place-making for these small startup and maker economy types of businesses, and that it would be a catalyst for economic growth. It would perhaps provide an opportunity for the size and type of new technology business that generally can't afford to be in many parts of Cupertino, but are, like the Brookings Institute diagram showed you, they're a vital part of a real healthy eco environment for a technology industry.
And Tom, I mentioned, also, and it's not just for tech, but we were also thinking it could be artists, it could be bakers or other types of artisans. So the, the whole idea, it's a maker economy for a number of different types of artists, if you will.
Yes. So, and then, the vision plan would hopefully establish some basic design guidance so that as this vision, this, the innovation district emerged, that there would be a district identity, some way of the design of the facades and the public realm really marking it as an interesting district. So, we were working with an economist on this. They had a small role to actually go up and examine some of the things that are going on on Bub Road right now, the types of businesses that are there. They did a number of interviews with real estate brokers, landlords, a couple other Bay Area innovation districts, one in Hayward, one in Fremont. And then they also work in that realm anyway, so they, they interview folks like that. And just generally looking at what are the pressures that would prevent this from happening in the Bub Road area? And it's generally real estate, it's land value, and it's the value of the properties. So, what you see here, the purple, and you see some auto repair over on Imperial Avenue, and closer to Stevens Creek, you see those smaller and more auto-oriented businesses. But, at least in one of their interviews, they got an anecdotal story about some of the pressure that's really happening to some of those businesses. An anecdote they heard was that an Imperial Avenue auto business, you know, was, was sold for, you know, $300 a square foot. And the new person came in and developed it for light, light industrial, like a industa, technology type of company, rented it out and sold it for about 500 a square foot. So it didn't actually stay as a landlord, but certainly just flipped the property. And they saw, our economist is thinking that even though that's an anecdote, it's typically what is going to perhaps happen if this just goes on with no vision for any other type of future. So, our economist identifies flex properties as, it's like a warehouse type of property that's easily converted to an office use. And so when they start to say that flex properties represent... And so when they start to say that flex properties represent eighty-five percent of what's going on, on Bub Road, that's the kind of parcel they're talking about. It's a, like a warehouse type of building, but it's either already been converted or could easily be converted to an office use. And, uh, this gives information for approximately how much of that type of flex property is located in Bob, Bub Road as opposed to the rest of the city. And then some slight affordability issues that are, are in the plus column for Bub Road. So some of the, uh, key considerations, uh, because of those companies being generally young, starting out, there is a lot of, um, pressure on rent. They have rent pressure. Innovation businesses, maker, maker businesses like, uh, Angela was speaking to. They, uh, they tend to, uh, be able to pay quite a bit less than what's currently, uh, the mark, the market rate, certainly on Bub Road or in Cupertino. So what we started doing, it was we started examining, uh, a program they have in San Francisco that, um, in sort of the outer neighborhoods, the eastern neighborhoods. It's called a PDR, um, production, distribution and repair. And what the city's done is they're targeting those kinds of uses and those kinds of businesses that need help with their rent. And so what they've developed is a zoning code assistance where it's an incentive based thing. So if you bring in, if you bring in that kind of business through an agreement that you would have to sign, you're allowed a different development yield on your parcel. So in Bub Road, that might play out. We haven't, we, our next goal is to meet again with the staff about this and then have a community meeting. In Bub Road, that might play out that those businesses, I think, currently have a thirty-foot height limit. They might have a point three five or a point five FAR. You might say, yeah, that's, that's the regulations. However, if you bring in this kind of a business, you can do a little bit more or a little bit different, maybe higher, more dense, more lot coverage, things like that. And start to say, if we get the kind of development that we want, that's part of this vision, it would, it would play out differently in the zoning that you're allowed to do. So the status on this project is, um, again, to meet with staff, really organize ourselves to what we want to take to that community meeting, how we want to talk about some potential ideas that we have, like the PDR zoning idea in San Francisco. And, um, sort of structure a, a, a public workshop where people can, the community can come and talk about this and see this. After that, we're, we're ready to do that as soon as, you know, late spring. You know, as soon as I can meet with staff and really organize it, get it to happen, get a place for it. And then we would develop the vision plan. We've already done a lot of research and, um, idea shopping for, you know, what, what, what do we really want to do here? And how would we pull it off? And then we could be back in the fall with a vision plan for you to review and, um, and then refine it after we would accept your comments. And that's all I have on the three projects.
Thank you. So we are available to answer questions or?
Okay, do we have any speaker cards? Yeah, we'll do those, the speaker cards first. Kathy Helgerson followed by Jen, uh, Peggy Griffin. Welcome Kathy.
Well, my first question is, um, why are all these restaurants leaving Cupertino? You're doing nothing to keep them here. Is it, is it the taxes? I mean, I could work with some of you guys to find out what's going on here. We've lost some of my favorite restaurants. So how, how many mobile vendors are you talking about? What buildings are they going to use? Uh, rents are high in Cupertino, retail space is difficult. How, how does this mo, how do these mobile vendors affect the sit-down restaurants and the fast food restaurants that are already here? My feeling is it could be robbing business from them. I was just thinking about, uh, tax revenue. Bub Road, how will this affect traffic issues and school kids traveling down the road? Where are these buildings that are available on Bub Road? What makes the city think that these startups can survive in the city going, in the city? Are you going to help with funding? Are you going to supply some of the funding that, um, they're going to need? What is lower rent space? I have no idea what that is. Like I said, are you going to supply some portion of their rent and their expenses to get them started for a while? Flex properties, what are you going to do about security? If they're small little units or whatever, uh, there's robbers in Cupertino just like any other place. So I'm just a little worried about security for these people. And a lot of them will probably be working at night. So you gotta be careful with, uh, people leaving to get into their cars. And so are we going to be paying more money for security for these, um, startups, these incubator, uh, startups? These are things we have to consider. And I really feel that, um, I'm worried about the restaurants that are here already. Will they leave when business drops? Because you've got these, uh, these restaurants, these bakers, these, you know, you've got this cutesy, woozy, whatever area where all these, uh, startup vendors are and stuff with all their new innovation and stuff. We've had too many restaurants leave here. I, I'm very upset about that. So the first thing is to decide, why are they leaving? And here we are putting more into the mix to get more money. I mean, the, the city has to realize that it's not just, uh, tax revenue all the time. You know, how are you making it easier? Um, for instance, I can't eat at the Alexander Steakhouse. It's too expensive. That steak is from Japan. Do you realize what they're charging for that? I mean, this is outrageous that we have all these, uh, expensive restaurants. I mean, maybe you guys can go, go there, you know, take me there once in a while and, and, and I'm all for it, you know? I, I invite me, you know, you're so wealthy. Anyways, I think I brought up a lot of really good things to consider and talk about amongst yourselves, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have never been to Alexander's. I can't afford it either. Welcome Peggy.
Neither can I. Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members and staff. First thing, I'm strongly opposed to modifying the general plan to allow innovative space in a retail section. The, the document that comes with this, uh, report says that you have to have a cluster for a retail area to be successful, it needs to be a cluster. Well, if one area, one site of a shopping center gets taken over by office, you change the parking dynamics, employees park all day, they don't come and go like retailers. And one by one, you make, you basically doom the successful retailers by taking less, you, you retailers in the center. So I'm, I'm completely against doing that. You can designate office, put it in the office area. The other thing is the light industrial. I heard the previous council talk about the importance of preserving our, in light industrial area. And they were talking about, you know, the garage, our tires, how we, people here get our cars fixed. So I'm concerned about that with Bub. I think it's a good idea, but, um, don't want to lose those. The third thing is innovative space. It talks about main streets thing. Has anybody studied it to see, did it work? Did, how many people are there, what size they take? I didn't hear that it was very successful. So I'd like to hear about that before trying to do it somewhere else. And the fourth thing, fourth thing is that I don't think the city's doing enough for small retailers. You have this chamber of commerce, but basically the big guys rule it. I think you should have a representative from the city and an organization for just small retailers. And they can interact with the city. And that way you have a way of getting input from them without them being over towered by large businesses. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Peggy, we can bring it back to council and, um, I guess I will go first. So I agree with one of the speakers. I am very concerned about the mobile food trucks, um, taking business away from these restaurants that are paying these high lease rates and, um, struggling to get customers. We lost Rubio's, we lost Kentucky Fried Chicken. The list goes on and on. So except in special cases like special events, um, I'd be, like our Earth Day, that, that's food trucks. That's fine there, but I would not like to see them, um, here every day. And are, are we required to allow mobile vendors? The sidewalk ordinance doesn't require forcing us to allow mobile vendors, does it?
The, um, SB nine forty-six, um, allows what's called sidewalk vendors and roaming sidewalk vendors. So that's not a, uh, motorized vehicle, it's a cart. And you're required, if you allow commercial sales in a certain district, like a CG district, then you'll have to allow that. If you don't allow commercial in a residential district, such as what you have right now, you have to allow roaming, but you do not have, you do not have to allow, um, stationary.
Okay, well, a food truck is motorized, so that wouldn't, wouldn't apply to that.
Yes, and then the idea of establishing some type of process, um, some of the discussions that we've had was possibly having this as a pilot where it would only be allowed in a certain area. And then possibly of areas that, uh, do not have a concentration of, uh, brick and mortar restaurants. So they wouldn't be affected. And also there was, uh, an idea of possibly capping the number of, uh, mobile vendors who apply and are allowed to, um, operate.
Okay. And as Peggy mentioned, I would agree with her that I would not like to take retail and convert it to, um, industrial of any kind. That just, it's, it's going to increase the value of that space and the retailers would be forced out. They would not be able to afford, um, to lease the retail space. We've already lost a lot of retailers because of that. And then on Bub Road, I just wonder, the property owners of those buildings, and I recall Steve Jobs met in this chamber saying, not very good buildings. Do they want to maintain these buildings that were tilt-ups in the nineteen seventies? Or do they want to build something else there? You know, maybe we can, maybe we should look at building new office space on that side of town instead, instead of everything over on the west side. As well as it's possible that there could be housing put in on some of that land instead of industrial. If the, if it's vacated as Apple, um, moves to newer buildings. Let's see, what else do I have? Okay, I guess that's all, so. Who wants to go next? You have anything, John? Darcy? Liang, I'm sure you have something to add. A lot to add.
Okay, so, um, I want to clarify, um, why are we talking about subsidizing innovation business? But there is no talk about possibly subsidizing struggling retail business, which add to quality of life as we know is critical from the survey. And I think other, other cities, uh, like Palo Alto and San Francisco have ordinances that try and, um, preserve this kind of small business. So have that been considered?
I'm not sure what you mean by subsidizing. We are not putting in any funds, um.
That's a term that's used by the consultant. We, because, uh, Bub Road is an area with lower rent for office. And we are talking about how do we keep them having lower rent to allow incubator space to be there? I think a reason, a key reason a lot of retailers are struggling is the rising rent. So how come we have, we are now looking at that key issue first? Have we looked at them, the rising rent of retail space?
It is, it's, um, what's going on in the market, we cannot dictate the lease rates. But you are right, in this area, we do, um, have very high retail rates. Typically for, uh, new construction retail, you're looking at, uh, lease rate of maybe four dollars to four twenty-five, um, per square foot, uh, usually triple net. For maybe, uh, older retail stock, you possibly can pay, um, around the high three dollars per square foot. Office rates, uh, I think the high end for new office, what they classify as class A office here in Cupertino is close to five dollars a square foot. And again, it's, uh, the city is unable to dictate lease rates.
But then we are trying to do something for, to provide lower rent for incubator companies.
I don't know if it's rates, it's, uh, really providing an opportunity to encourage that type of, um.
So, and also when we are talking about re, we are basically talking about, okay, we will allow them to increase height, allow them to develop. Once you redevelop Bub Road, the rent is going to go up like all the other retail that, all the other development that's being redeveloped. So you are not going to keep the rent low, like you said, it's a market driven, right? So this plan doesn't seem to work.
Perhaps I shouldn't have said subsidize, I should have said incentivize. So the city would give the property owner a hi, a higher development yield in exchange for the property owner agreeing to put a certain kind of tenant in there. So that would be the incentive.
Shouldn't we do that for retail too, if we can do that?
You could, we're.
We are subsidizing kind of because we are giving them density in exchange for lower rent. If we can do that for business, we should have done that for retail. Why couldn't we do that?
We can't, I can't do it in this specific project because I'm only looking at the light industrial zoned properties in the Bub Road area. I'm not saying it's not a good idea. But what I'm looking at is the light industrial areas and how those might facilitate more of the maker type businesses.
So we should, we should be able to look at a way to incentivize the property owners to give us, uh, lower rent for retail business. Because they provide services to our residents, right? But that's just not yet been considered yet.
We have not considered that yet.
Okay. Another thing is, um, for the lighter industrial, we were, we are talking about rezoning light industrial areas near Bub Road. What other areas in Cupertino is zoned light industrial, uh, besides those?
As far as I know, that is the only area.
Yeah, I don't know offhand. All, all I know is that's only where I'm supposed to be looking.
Removing the only light industrial zoning in Cupertino to turn that into office. Then I would like to understand what we are losing. What are the uses that's allowed only in light industrial area? Because allowing that means you are, you will be increasing rent for those businesses that usually will be only allowed in lights, light industrial area. So that's what would be the impact, so I need to understand that.
I think the idea is really not to rezone, but however, to, um, have a broader vision of what could be.
But you are effectively rezoning, right?
Oh, well, it would be to have a vision of attracting more of the makers, um, type businesses. So light industrial right now, in my understanding, is, is kind of light manufacturing quasi-type, um, at, at that use. And I think we are, um, not being able to achieve that as, in terms of the diversity that's there currently. Uh, so the idea is to have this kind of broader idea of what this district could look like to be able to attract more of those maker type businesses where they really are doing kind of small prototypes of.
Maybe let me understand first, what light is, light industrial zoning usually would allow? Could you give examples?
R and D.
Like garage, manufacturing?
Uh, yeah, autos, say auto services, like exists on, uh, a lot of the Imperial Avenue businesses are, are light industrial. There's a church up there. There's, um, a large, I think it's a Caltrans facility. And then there's just a lot of office.
I'm not talking about existing uses. I mean, in terms of zoning code, what's allowed, what's considered only allowed under light industrial zoning. Those would be the businesses that we are losing when we are saying you can allow other. when we are saying you can allow other uses, right? And also, a very important key thing for Cupertino economic development is diversify our businesses, right? If this is the only light industrial zoned area, it seems we should focus on how to attract more businesses that fit exactly in manufacturing, vehicle service, those kind of things, versus considering something that's not there, so that we can diversify the type of businesses in Cupertino. Have that been considered?
I think we are kind of talking about the same type of idea, of being able to have that light manufacturing of these prototypes or R and D, and being able to preserve a space for where we have the auto shops. So it's not an idea of replacing what we have. It's more of a vision of what all we can attract to that area. And I don't think we had discussed bringing in traditional office. Unfortunately, that's what's currently there. But light industrial does support, you know, the auto shops and kind of...
Like maybe a Tesla manufacturer.
That would be great, I would love that.
Or one of these autonomous vehicle plant.
So that would be...
Those are not maker-type businesses. Maker-type businesses usually is smaller, and they are prototyping, they are, they tend to, can be anywhere.
It can, and it would just be nice to be able to have an area where there's synergy of the type of businesses that you mentioned, but also the smaller prototype, that possibly they would be making prototypes for the larger tenants who may be there.
Yeah. Another thing that I'm struggling to understand is, you are kind of saying, "Oh, we need space for small businesses." But then the statistics that you just showed for throughout two thousand and fourteen is we have a lot of turnovers, and most of those are small, small office spaces. So small office spaces are available, companies are moving in and out. What we really need is maybe mid-sized, top, the ones that actually generate significant sales tax revenue, what kind of businesses are there? That's something we should study versus small businesses. And as this report says, Cupertino only has nine businesses with more than two hundred and fifty employees. So that means all the, I don't know, ninety-nine point nine percent of other businesses are already small and mid-sized. So why are we, why do we want more of the smaller ones? How does that benefit the city economically? I don't understand.
The idea is, again, as you had mentioned, for economic diversity, for business diversity.
So we need larger businesses?
With the hopes that we could grow those smaller ones. With the larger, the mid-sized businesses, companies, unfortunately, we do not have the inventory of office space for them to either move into or to grow into. That's the struggle right now, contiguous office space. We are lacking large footprints. And what we do have, as you said, and as you've seen in that graph, where it's a lot of turnover for smaller businesses. But then again, they struggle with the high rents and the high lease rates. And with the idea of the incubator and coworking space, in fact, similar to Pacific workplaces here in Cupertino, there's offices, but there's also shared space, so the overhead cost to operate is a little bit lower. And there has been success of those businesses growing, or at least being able to rent space in a co, or co-sharing, coworking office type setup.
So, last question before I, I'll give rather chance. So Main Street already has incubator space. That's, I think, thirty-five thousand square foot. That's, that was allocated to them in addition to the almost, I think, three hundred thousand square foot of office space allocated to them. So how has that working out? Who we are, who they are rented to, what are the size, the square footage of those companies? Are they startups? Incu, how big are those companies?
I believe they are all about the four-person range. I would have to double-check, but I think Pepper Data is still there. And so they have tenants using that space. And again, I believe the office spaces are about at a thousand square feet or less, which would accommodate a company of up to four or so, depending on how snug you're sitting or what their setup is. But my understanding is they do have tenants for all of the smaller footprint office spaces.
So they have about thirty-five thousand square foot of space there? So, a thousand square foot, you mean, there are thirty companies? How many companies are there?
Again, I will, I will double-check and get back.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. So to follow up on some of Liang's points, does light industrial include office? So for the businesses on Bob Road that are Apple Offices, Direct Office, which is a pharmaceutical development company, are those allowed in light industrial? Ah-ha!
Ben can speak to that, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and Staff, Ben Freehan, Director for Community Development. So office space is allowed as an accessory use. So if you have, for example, a sewing shop over there, and you have an office in the back, that's allowed, but not as a principally permitted use on its own.
Well, I mean, I would observe that most, there's the big Caltrans facility. But if I, and then there was an auto shop, I think it's gone now, servicing fancy German cars. But other than that, it seems like most of the buildings along Bob Road are conventional office, including the very large facility on Bob and McClellan. Can you comment, is that area zoned for light industrial?
Those areas are zoned as M L, so those are zoned for industrial uses, manufacturing, those kind of things. You're looking at things like warehouses, wholesale, auto mechanic, those kind of things. So yeah, there are some office uses, but you know, when you...
I'd say there are a lot of office uses.
When a building goes through a change of use, depending on the...
Do we have any control over it when it goes through a change of use?
When it comes through with permitting, yeah, we have control when...
What if it doesn't come through with permitting?
Then we're not an active co-enforcement agency, so...
Uh-huh, okay. So another question. First, a story, don't go away. You're my planning department. At the time we entitled Main Street, we were told by the developer that we could expect to have anybody but Apple lease the space, the large space, those two big buildings, hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet. I was, I got a call from a real estate broker about a year into that process of deciding, I guess, I didn't know at the time, but who was going to occupy that space. And he said, "Help." We were in negotiation with Sand Hill Property Company, but they haven't returned our call for a month. And we're representing a company called, what's the name? The company out of San Francisco that moved to San Tannaro, a big data company.
Oh, was it Splunk?
Splunk, yes. So David Brant and I went and visited the tower where Splunk used to be. And they said, "What can we do?" We reached out, we didn't hear much from Sand Hill. Sure enough, two months later, hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet was leased to Apple, presumably at some premium. So my basic question about any of this, whether it's new Class A space or Class B space, is do we have any means of securing economic diversity that won't get flipped once it's built? Because quite frankly, right, that was of such disappointment, I think, to all of us who, we genuinely would like to be reliant on a variety of businesses in our tax base, our economic life. And, you know, we've been working on this project since two thousand and fourteen, but my God, it's now two thousand and nineteen. At the time, people, when we were doing Main Street, people threw up their hands and said, "We don't know what to do about this. There doesn't seem to be any legal mechanism for this." What's to say if we did do Innovation Place on Bob Road, and we gave a developer an incentive, it wouldn't just get flipped into office? It seems like we just don't have any legal mechanisms. I wonder if our, either our planning department, our economic development manager, or attorney could comment on this.
I think, I think through, that's the effort that Angela and Tom are trying to, that's the sort of struggle in the process, is figuring out some objective standards that we can place in there to ensure that the spaces are loaned, that are being leased out, provides an adequate space to accommodate smaller uses. So provide these opportunities.
At the end of the day, do we have any, if a new building becomes available, we have an economic development zone, we have any, any one of these things? We've talked about this, I mean, particularly, I guess it's Innovation District, right? Our incubator, incubator and coworking. Do we have, at the end of the day, any mechanism to make sure that it's being used for small businesses? Or is it just gonna get sucked up? In a flip, that is, right? "Oh, sure, we got this company in, but you know, in a few months, it turns out to be something else." I note recently in Mountain View that WeWork won a long protracted fight to get the office space right there at San Antonio, right? Are you familiar with what I'm talking about here? So WeWork is a company that leases ideally, right, to a bunch of little companies. Well, guess what? Guess which company that was bidding against them for this bought out the entire space from WeWork? Anybody know? You know? Begins with an F. Facebook took the whole thing, right? Facebook took the whole thing, this is recently. So I'm, I really am, I mean, I would be supportive of anything you can find that would be legally defensible, that would allow us to diversify our economic base. Yes, retail, yes, office. But honestly, I want something that's actually gonna be effective. Because promises that developers make are worth, are worth nothing without effective terms in a development agreement or by some mechanism that you have to come up with, or not. But gosh, it's, you know, this has been going on a long time. Two thousand and fourteen, we started this process. Here we are today, thinking that we're supportive of economic development. But, you know, I will say that I'm supportive generally of mobile vendors when we had the events that were happening in the, in the Whole Foods lot several years ago. I think there were a lot of residents that came out. It built community, very effective, there was lots of engagement. I think it was very successful. I don't know what happened to that, does anybody know?
Zero.
So as far as I know, that was, that happened under a special permit.
Yeah.
That was managed by Whole Foods, because it is their property.
Yeah.
And I did call Off the Grid to find out why they weren't operating, and they were just, they had just told me that they were taking a break. So I don't know what exactly happened between Off the Grid, which manages the food trucks, and Whole Foods. But it was nothing that had come through the city in terms of our regulation or enforcing of the special event permit.
May I?
Yeah, please.
One of the people that I interviewed in the process of looking at ways that we might develop zoning regulations that facilitate what we want is a senior planner in San Francisco. He told me that what they do, I didn't, I haven't looked at their code, but this is something I would think that we would try to go to if we continue down this path, is that they very carefully define what production, distribution, and repair is. And then after occupancy, they go in, because I was describing some of the spaces, because I've been in some of the places on Results Way.
Yeah.
And I was describing it, "Yeah, it's an industrial building on the outside, but on the inside, it looks just like another office building." He said, "Well, we kick them out."
Because it isn't just another office building.
Well, he said, "They're found to be not in compliance with their use permit, and they're either fined or kicked out or whatever." So, but that requires staffing to go back and do follow-up work. But that's how San Francisco does it. They very carefully write what P D R is, and then go back and find out if something else is coming in instead.
Okay, well, I would observe that with all the knowledge I have, and yes, I live in that general area of town, you know, software is developed on Bob Road. And other things are being done on Bob Road that could probably be done in any generic office space. That's my experience. And yes, on Imperial, we have auto repair places that we highly value and treasure, and we don't want to lose them either. So, but again, my overriding concern in this, that I'd love to hear a convincing argument for, is we know how to honestly diversify our, our business pool here. And not just make more of it that then gets swallowed up as Main Street did. And that, you know, other than that, this has taken a long time for me, but you know, I'm one person on this new council, so, thank you.
So I had a question. Are you proposing that the existing buildings be replaced with taller buildings and giving that property owner an incentive to keep part of the building as this quote "maker space"? Because I heard you mention, well, we'll give them some kind of bonus where they can be encouraged to do this.
We are just going over what incentives there may be for a property owner to be able to essentially, we're hoping that they would drop the lease rates that would be a little bit more affordable for these smart, smaller businesses. So we are, we are looking at and trying to find different ways to make this, as you said, incentivize or more attractive.
Yeah, we're not proposing it yet. It's an idea that I'd like to bring forward to a community meeting.
Okay. Well, first, I used to work on Bob Road. It was, we did manufacturing in the back in some of the buildings, software development in other buildings with no manufacturing. And a lot of it was just office and software development. But a lot of those buildings were built with big spaces in the back for doing small manufacturing. But I don't think, there's probably none of that happening there anymore. I know Apple leased the building I used to work in, and they used it for their electronics recycling. They kind of gutted the whole building, and it was like one big warehouse. But personally, I would like to see Bob Road redevelop. Those buildings are built in the seventies, they were junky when they were built. They're even junkier now. And that's an area where you legitimately could go up a little higher if it's up against Highway eighty-five. And it's kind of unfair to the building owners to say, "Hey, you've got to keep these junky buildings operating and lease them for lower rates" to businesses. And while I'm all in favor of maker spaces, I worked in maker spaces, you know, it's possible that small new businesses need to go where the lease rates are lower. You know, we can't force our lease rates to be lower. We're trying to be too smart here and manage this where it just may not be something we can manage. Anyway, that's my view.
Okay, a question for the mobile vendor. I do think we need some ordinance to regulate that. So do we get sales tax from these mobile vendors when they are in Cupertino? Do they, now, if they don't have to register, how do we even get sales tax?
They do have to register, they have to have a business license.
Oh, so they do have to...
If it's food they're selling, they have to have a county health certificate and such.
Okay, so the ordinance will help us regulate where they can park or sell and the hours, and even better enforcement with fines and penalties. So I think that's a really necessary step to take. But yeah, we need, do need to be careful where it's located. However, the kind of mobile park that, foot truck area that was in front of... However, the kind of mobile park that, foot truck area that was in front of Whole Foods was really successful. And I think in San Francisco, there was an area, they also have, like, the whole cluster, they have like twenty foot trucks there Friday night. And then it became an area that a lot of people just hang out.
Yes, I think that's the Fort Mason area, it's in San Francisco.
So it's a possible way to create a new night gathering place.
So one of the, we're looking, we've, I looked at a number of different model ordinances. Mountain View just redid their mobile vending about three years ago. Oakland just did their food trucks about two years ago. We're looking, I think there's two different kinds of uses. There's the mobile truck that goes out and sells its service, and then there's a special event. So the way our, the draft code that we're developing is working out is if there's more than four trucks at one or three, we can make the number whatever it needs to be. But if there's more than three, it needs to be a special event and would be regulated differently.
Special permit, yeah, so.
And I think that's what happened on the Whole Foods lot. They weren't going through your mobile vending permit, they, they had a special use permit.
Yeah, a special event permit, correct.
So besides the food, I think there are now mobile, like doctor, car, car service, all kinds of things are, people are bringing into, especially companies, bring them to their parking lot for their employees.
Correct.
Do we regulate those or because it's on their private property?
No, no, they would all be part of this ordinance. And the ordinance would be broken into three different categories. Public right-of-way, private property, and public parks. And the reason public parks stands away, stands out differently than public right-of-way is because of SB nine forty-six. SB ninety forty, SB nine forty-six allowed those roaming sidewalk vendors, if you don't have an ordinance, they can go into a park during any business hour they, they have and sell their wares. So if we put the ordinance in place, it allows the Parks Department to develop special relate, written relationships with the vendors that are there.
Yeah.
And supposedly then also ensure we're collecting tax, right?
Right, every vendor would have to have a business license.
And so what's the penalty right now if they don't have a license and operating in Cupertino?
That's, I think right now, your penalty for the first offense is a hundred dollars, I'm not sure. But I think that's what it is. It was in, basically in compliance with what SB ninety, nine forty-six was saying the maximum could be for first, second, and third offenses.
That's not a lot.
So what kind of sidewalk, I see occasionally people selling fruit on the sidewalk, but I have not seen very many sidewalk vendors, if any, in Cupertino.
I don't, because I've, I've asked staff, let me see an existing permit. They, they don't think any, recently, there's been an actual permit issue.
And selling fruit, even if they registered, there would be no sales tax on food, right? Because they're selling cases of strawberries.
Well, but they would have to have a business license.
Right, yeah, they'd have to have a business license, which I'm sure they don't, but.
So another thing is, I think these three items that's proposed from this economical strategic plan, in the plan, it says the leading agency should be planning, except maybe the mobile vendor, I think. So I'm hoping that going forward, the planning department who has expertise in zoning and develop, and all the different issues should be in charge of ordinances for any kind of zoning change on Bob Road. And even mobile vendor, I think that should be. The Economic Development Committee can consult with the planning, but planning should be the department. And the Planning Commission should be the commission that's helping us before it comes through the council.
Yes, economic, well, myself as Economic Development Staff has been working very closely with planning staff as a cross-functional team. But if council decides, we are more than happy to kind of pursue this and take it to Planning Commission for them to weigh in on.
Yeah, I hope that Economic Development Committee can focus more on figuring out how, how come we have such strong purchasing power? But our retail sales is going down by seventeen percent since two thousand and five, as your chart shows. And so where people are spending our money and provide this kind of information to incoming businesses so that they know what kind of needs Cupertino residents have.
Yes.
I'm really surprised it's seventeen percent because I remember for Valco, the, the report, nine two one, nine two one two report for Valco shows that the sales for Valco is stable from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fourteen, even after adjusted for inflation. So actually, Valco is performing better than the rest of Cupertino? That's surprising, yeah, okay.
Councilmember Paul.
I just have a few brief comments. With regard to retail, I think that we need to be figuring out ways to encourage that retail growth and making sure that we have more of a diversity of selections available. With regard to incubator space, we did have an opportunity for incubator space at Main Street. There was roughly thirty thousand square feet set aside for that purpose. And when I came on council in two thousand and fourteen, I, I did do a significant amount of work to try to connect people that could potentially be occupying that incubator space. But, but nothing really came of it. I don't know if that ultimately got rented out to Apple or something of a more mid-sized, small company took it over. I know that it wasn't rented out to, say, something like Pacific Workplaces. But I, I think what, what concerns me about going forward with incubator space is that if we're not executing on that, then what we're essentially looking at is either a slow or a mid-range speed conversion into office for whatever it is that you're looking to, to make. Of course, Main Street didn't have anything to begin with. But Main Street did designate these squares for incubator space, and we just lost it. You know, the developer was willing to say, hey, look, here's thirty thousand square feet. You could have it for incubator space. So my question here is, what does that actually mean? You know, if we're really saying, let's identify this, do we have the will as a city to go ahead and try to deliver it and to try to sustain it? Because if we don't, and I just, I question whether we have put in enough work into asking ourselves, what do we need to do in order to have this type of space available in Cupertino? I think it's good, it's good to have it. But part of the plan, if we're going to create one, should be about how we outreach, who we talk to, what kinds of other efforts that we need to make in order to ensure that this type of space gets utilized as such. With regard to the, the food trucks, my, my inclination is to say we comply with SB nine forty-six. But I prefer to see a baseline that essentially preserves all of our rights as a jurisdiction. And then we start to perhaps become a little bit more open and lenient from, from that baseline. So if we were to put forward something and we were to say, you know, you could have food trucks in various places potentially, why don't we have members of the public let us know what the desire is? And I, I would be much more comfortable with that than to say, well, you can have food trucks in all these places in addition to what the requirements of SB nine forty-six are. So, so that would be my preference. Because I, I don't know whether we're actually solving a problem or perhaps creating more for the relatively limited amounts of retail that we already have in our bricks and mortar spaces. So with regard to Bob, I, I think that it is correct. We should wait for our incoming planning director or economic, or not economic, the Community Development Director, as we call that position, to, to come in and give us some set of recommendations. It is kind of alarming that it is so heavily utilized with regard to office and we have apparently a lack of enforcement with regard to whether there's compliance there. Because that also connects to the idea that if we were going to build a particular type of space, you know, what stops that type of space from converting to something else altogether? That, that runs, you know, quite awry or afoul of our original intent. And, and if we can't even define it in a manner that's successfully defined and execute with regard to enforcing that use of the space, then there's really no point in talking about, you know, what is it that we need to be doing in order to encourage this? Because then it's sort of like, we set it and forget it, and then it changes inevitably. So I, I would like to see what we can be doing in terms of defining what we'd like to see this space become. I agree that it probably could stand to use some modernization and less height restrictions. So let's, let's look at, you know, at least, at least office and residential for that particular usage along Bob. I, I will say, I think that some of the space, and this has been a bit of, I don't wanna call it a symptom, but perhaps a characteristic sometimes, you know, good, bad, or indifferent. When, when there are spaces that come in and there are particular uses desired, there have been, you know, lobbying efforts, right? I, I mean, I, I don't know whether that is something that we should try to sustain as a community. But I know that that's part of the fabric of how we, we tend to operate over time. It, it tends to make the standards a bit looser. And so, you know, I don't wanna lose the, the small-town type of feel, but at the same time, you can look up and down Bob, and it's clearly not light industrial from McClellan over to Stevens Creek, you know, all, all the way through. So perhaps this is an opportunity to look at that type of, you know, policy setting and enforcement as well as execution and give a pretty good project to the new person who will be taking over our planning department. Thanks.
Could I just add one thing? So, so I, I do, you know, the two big buildings were leased to Apple. The, if you go up to the, the space, and I'm looking at their website right now, Pepper Data is a small software company whose headquarters is, is up there in the, above the retail on Main Street. So we were successful in getting, you and I, among others, were successful in getting that done. But for the bigger part, right, we, we got just more of the same. Thanks.
So just a couple of questions, you know. I'd really like a better understanding of what's considered light industrial. I mean, would an animal hospital be considered light industrial?
Yes.
Would a pet boarding facility be considered light industrial?
And that will have to check the MUCO.
So services that would benefit the residents, the ones that have pets, they need to get serviced. If we wind up moving areas of the city away from the services that would benefit the residents, we will become a very sterile environment. I, I saw the plumbing company that I use, the last time I had him out, he's in Tracy. And the services that would benefit, small shuttles, a couple, from articles that I've read, not recently, but the small daycares and schools that utilize shuttles and stuff. If we move those things away, which we kind of do, Morgan Hill, South San Jose, as opposed to being where the residents need them. So I, I would really like a list of what's considered light industrial, services that would really benefit the residents. And then if it's possible for there to be ways to keep some of those. I'm coming up with ideas, you know, solar installation and service type company, recycling, somebody else mentioned it up here, services for schools, things of that nature, where there are small businesses that would love to service the schools, look at the high schools, things like that. But they have to move so far away and bring all of their equipment when they need to come and do service in Cupertino. And so I, I would just really like to better understand what is considered light industrial, how we could encourage that to not only stay, but, you know, come and make for a complete community as opposed to one that's fairly sterile and just all business and everybody else is coming from outside of Cupertino. So that's my comment. Sure like to see, see a better understanding of that when we revisit this.
Okay, yeah, one last thing, Leon, because we have to break at six thirty.
Yeah, one last thing. But I agree, we need to strengthen industrial zoning and better enforcement. And one last thing, it's actually one of the policies, strategy that's in the plan, developer design standards for retail space in mixed-use development. We desperately need this because there will be streamlined, projects will be able to get streamlined along Stevens Creek, where we now allow them to have zero retail space. And there is almost no standard to define what kind of retail space, even if there is any. And we have seen that in some retail space, the way the parking is designed, the signage is designed, businesses go in, they are not successful. We need to figure out how, what kind of the mixed-use design retail, what kind of retail design will be successful in mixed-use environment? That's essential for us to figure out. So I hope that we focus on that versus, yeah, going forward.
Okay, it's six twenty-five now, our regular meeting begins at six forty-five. Do you need anything else from us now?
No, I appreciate the feedback and comments. I, tonight's study session was to, I think, get more direction from council as to proceed. So it sounds like there were asks from each of the council members to, to bring back more information. So we will collect that and, and come back for, I guess, a follow-up. And then possibly you can determine if new initiatives should be taken on and, and how you wanna move forward with these three? Is that correct?
Yeah, and I, and I would also add, I think on the mobile vendors, we may have enough information and, and direction that we could bring something back, you know, that is more solid for council to consider.
Right, okay, so we're, we'll adjourn until six forty-five.